Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members, officers and members of the public. Before we begin, I'm going to hand over to my vice chair just to give you an idea of how things might proceed this evening, please.
We are using microphones this evening and we are being recorded on YouTube and we're being streamed live. When you put your microphone on, the camera will be on you directly and probably on two people next to you. When you turn the microphone off, then the camera will move away from you and back to whoever speaks next.
Okay, next matter of protocol. I have a printed item here to read. Introduction for meeting of the Bournemouth Christchurch and Poole Shadow Overview Scrutiny Committee. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this evening's meeting of the BCP Shadow Overview and Scrutiny Committee. I am councillor Michael Wine-Honig and I am the chairman of the committee. Members and officers have their names in front of them for ease of reference. In order to assist in the process this evening, I must ask everyone to ensure that mobile phones are either switched off or on silent mode. We would be grateful if you would remain quiet whilst the meeting is in progress. I just might add a few house rules. Please respect each other, we are working together. Please, we're looking for questions, not statements, and we need to ensure we make the best use of the time we have. I would like to remind everyone present, this meeting is being filmed by the council and broadcast live on the internet and will be capable of repeated viewing. If you are seated in the chamber, it is possible that the cameras will capture your image. By your presence, you are deemed to consent to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting and/or training purposes. As the chairman of the meeting, I can, at my discretion, terminate or suspend filming if, my opinion, continuing to do so would prejudice the proceedings of the meeting, or if I consider that continued filming might infringe the rights of any individual or breach any statutory provision. Finally, there are no planned fire drills for this evening. If the fire alarms sound, please evacuate the building immediately via the emergency exit. I will now hand over to Lindsay Mertens, who will continue with apologies and other matters.
Thanks, chairman. Apologies from councillor Anderson, and councillor Battistini is substituting.
Yeah, councillor Battistini substituting for councillor Anderson.
Any declarations of interest? None. Are there any public issues? None received. We will move to item five, which is the local government reorganisation programme update, which will come, I believe, from Jane Portman.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good evening, members. For those of you who don't know me very well or don't know me at all, my name's Jane Portman. My substantive post is managing director in Bournemouth, but at the first meeting of the Shadow Authority, I was appointed the interim head of paid service for the Bournemouth Christchurch and Poole Council. So I've been the senior responsible officer for the Bournemouth Christchurch and Poole Council Programme, so the delivery of the programme, which was formally approved by the joint committee and was reconfirmed as the implementation plan by the Bournemouth Christchurch and Poole Shadow Executive Committee at their inaugural meeting. The papers in front of you for the next meeting of the Shadow Executive Committee at item six is a programme update, which is a report by the programme director, who is Julian Osgathorpe, who is also around the table this evening, and between us, and we hope that we'll be able to answer any of your questions. But just by way of painting the big picture, you'll be aware that the programme has been underway for some time. It's broadly in three phases. The phases are overlapping phases. Phase one is nearing completion, hasn't been completed yet. That was about creating and establishing the foundations for the new authority. A lot of legal work has gone into that phase, as you will well be aware. We've had the structural changes order approved by Parliament. There are some consequential orders moving towards that parliamentary process, that's still work in progress. But once all that work has finished, probably in the autumn, that will be towards the end of phase one of our three-phase programme. Phase two has already started. Phase two is about preparing the new council for the delivery of safe and effective services from the 1st of April next year, and ensuring that all our residents, businesses, visitors and specific service users receive the quality of the services they expect and deserve. Phase three of the programme hasn't yet begun, but we are doing some preparatory work for that as officers at the moment. Phase three is about visioning the new future, arguably the most interesting and exciting part of the programme, although the lawyers have got very excited about phase one, I have to say. But phase three, for most of us, will be about reimagining and imagining a new shape for the new council. As I say, officers, we're doing some preparatory work around that, but that work won't really start in earnest until after the 1st of April next year. Now, I know that many members and many officers are disappointed with that timescale, that everybody wants to get excited about designing the new council much earlier than that. I think it would be fair to say that, given that it took the secretary of state 12 months to make a decision, that took that out of our hands. We were not in a position to be able to bring forward the programme until we got reminded to, and then a final decision, and that actually has just put us in a position where the amount of time to deliver a safe landing for services is all we are going to be able to achieve between now and the 1st of April, and that absolutely has to be our priority. I'm sure you would all agree that absolutely we need to make sure that no resident feels the difference when we move into the new council, that everybody continues to be able to access universal services, and especially services that are delivered to individuals are delivered in exactly to the same quality as people have been expecting previously. So unfortunately, we won't be able to get around to the exciting visioning stuff as soon as we would have liked, but that does not mean to say that we won't be starting that as soon as we practically can after the 1st of April. The pace of this programme, I'm sure you are all feeling it, it's very fast, very fast, and I was listening earlier and I heard councillor Pope make a remark in the earlier session, the session with the Centre for Public Scrutiny, about the pace, decision-making, the scrutiny of decisions and so on. I think we're all feeling the pace as very fast-moving. It is by necessity going to have to be if actually we're going to get to the 1st of April in an effective way. So I think I'm thanking you all in advance for the work that you're going to do through the overview and scrutiny panel every month up until that vesting day of the 1st of April. You'll see from the report that's in front of you at paper six of the Shadow Exec Committee papers that we're reporting good progress on the delivery of the programme. I'm sure we'd be happy to take any questions on that, but we really do feel as though it's working well. We've got a good framework for decision-making, we've got a good governance arrangement in place, we've got some very, very talented and enthusiastic and dedicated officers from across Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole, all focused on this work, and we are providing some support to members to help you all move forward. Obviously, we've brought the Centre for Public Scrutiny in to help this particular panel. You'll be aware, I very much hope through the monthly member newsletters that we're sending out, that we're starting next Wednesday a series of member seminars where we'll be bringing in various people to provide some external views of what we're doing, how we're doing it, and giving the opportunity for members to ask questions, both of external colleagues but also officers who are delivering. So just a plug, if I may, Chair, first member seminar next Wednesday, that's the 25th of July, Coffee and Networking from half past five, seminar starts at six o'clock, Bournemouth Learning Centre. Thank you, Chair.
Might you perhaps be able to give us any update on the judicial review?
Yes, there are actually two judicial reviews that are currently lodged. One is being issued by Christchurch Borough Council, a second judicial review. A second judicial review has been issued by a Dorset resident, an individual Dorset resident. In respect to the former, that has been lodged in the High Court of Justice and will be heard in the court on the 30th of July. So that's a day's hearing. We don't know when the outcome of that will be announced, but we have respectfully requested that the outcome is heard and announced as soon as possible. With regard to the second judicial review, that has not yet been determined by a judge whether that will be heard in the court or not, so that's currently under consideration.
In our previous session, we were asked to consider risk. Can you give some sort of indication of what risk this might have towards the progress?
At the moment, in terms of the delivery of the programme, we haven't taken account of the judicial review. We have been continuing to deliver the programme, because we have no time to lose, as it were, in terms of the programme delivery milestones. However, if there is a risk, of course, to the programme, to the whole concept of two new councils covering Dorset, if the judicial review is found to have merit. So yes, there is risk there.
Might I please open the floor to any questions from members of the committee?
Mr Chairman, can I just ask about the second application for judicial review? Is that on the same kind of lines as Christchurch Borough Council in that it's seeking an alternative or challenging the Secretary of State for his decision to proceed with this?
If I were to sum it up in, you know, the nub of the applicant's allegations, it's that the Secretary of State's decision, when the Secretary of State made his decision, he did not take into account the reviewed guidance on the duration of the council tax harmonisation process. So it is alleged by the resident that when the local partnerships business case was put forward as evidence to the Secretary of State, it was modelled on a 20-year harmonisation period. Following that, the Secretary of State changed the guidance around that duration and advised that that period would be too long and that it needed to be shortened to fewer years than that. So the Dorset resident is saying that because the council tax harmonisation period had to be changed, that the Secretary, and he's alleging that the Secretary of State did not take that into account and did not look at a revised business plan.
Councillor Clark?
Can I ask about the activity undertaken in the last period? Does that cover that now? Yeah. Paragraph nine says about tax harmonisation. Says a report on this appears later in the agenda and provides more detail. I just, I fell to find it, I don't know if, yeah.
Councillor Haynes?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I think as councillor Clark's actually noted himself, this will actually, his question will actually be covered in a later item under the item eight.
Any other questions from the floor or perhaps from the gallery? No? Well, that seems to have been quite acceptable. Thank you, Mrs Portman. Well, I will now move to councillor, I'm sorry, councillor, Ms Mertens to Marshall even, I'll get it right in the end, oh for goodness sake. Over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just to outline for members, the process followed to date with this item on disaggregation, there has already been some scrutiny on this issue, as you know, from the ONS Joint Working Group on disaggregation. And the detailed appendices to this item, which you will find at item nine in your executive papers, the detailed appendices were circulated to members of this committee at the latter end of last week for you to consider. And also just to highlight to you that of those appendices, some of them have already been considered by the Joint Working Group, and so the chairman doesn't intend to focus on them in great detail tonight. Those appendices are at appendix A, and they are summaries on place and childrens. So they've already been scrutinised by the Joint ONS Working Group. But to follow the process that was followed by the working group previously, we'll hand over to the co-chairs of the task and finish group on disaggregation, who'll give you an introduction on the work programme so far.
Councillor Broadhead?
Thank you very much, Chair. I thought I'd, first of all, thank you very much for having us here tonight. I'd also like to thank many of the same members here that were on the overview and scrutiny joint working group that spent an awful lot of time looking at disaggregation to date. I thought it might be useful, just as a quick overview, to take you on a little bit of a journey of the disaggregation work that has undergone to date and just to explain for members that might be a little bit more unfamiliar about what disaggregation actually is. Currently, I think it's around 87% of the services for Christchurch area are provided by Dorset County Council. And of course, what we've got to do when we're looking at the formation of the new unitary authority is set a budget and so have an idea about what the actual cost of services are in all of the areas so that we can make sure we've got a right-sized budget for the future. Currently, because a lot of services are provided by Dorset County Council as a whole, it's not, hasn't been clear to date exactly what the actual cost of the services that are provided, for instance, of children's services, adult social care, roads and things like that in the Christchurch area alone. So what the disaggregation process has been trying to achieve is to look at all of those different areas, and there's a lot of them by all accounts. I think it's around 150 different service areas, so that gives you an idea of the scale of the challenge. Look at each one of those and try and work out to the best knowledge that we can exactly what the total cost for this current financial year is of providing those services to the Christchurch area. So to give an example of roads, for instance, a difficult discussion to have, because whilst it might look very simple to say, well, there's, for the sake of argument, a thousand roads in, sorry, a thousand miles of roads in Dorset County Council area, 100 miles of which are in Christchurch, therefore it's 10% of the cost, not exactly that easy. And of course, there's been a lot of different ways that that process has been looked at, sometimes due to actual cost of service itself, sometimes due to individual cases, sometimes a bit of a best guess and what feels right. There was a bit of concern from members of the joint committee at the very early stages in recognition of the scale of this bit of work, that time was running out. And so I think councillor Haynes may well agree, the very first few meetings that we had, when we were looking at the initial models, we had, the libraries model was the first test model, if you like. A lot of work seemed to have been done, but there's a heck of a lot of work to undertake. And we really wanted to make sure on behalf of residents of the new authority and in particular of Christchurch, that that work was as robust as possible to make sure that those budgets were right, because if you don't get those budgets right and that forms a basis for the budget for the first year of the new council, it makes it very hard to provide services and in particular look after the most vulnerable, which is what a lot of these upper-tier services that we're talking about in particular are concerned with. Happy to report that the progress since then has been dramatic and really, really positive. And I would like to pay tribute to all of the people that have been involved, particularly officers from across the four authorities, from Bournemouth, Poole, Christchurch and Dorset County Council. The amount of work that's had to go into this process, and bearing in mind that they're all doing business as usual as well, has been very dramatic. And I would certainly say as co-chair of the disaggregation working group that's been going on to date, bearing in mind we're moving into the final phase, not quite done yet but nearing fruition, I've certainly got real satisfaction that the workings out that we've seen behind the scenes of all the individual areas are going to lead us to our, as best guess as we can of what the budget for these services in Christchurch are. So that's a little bit of summary about the work that's been going on to date. I think we've got a few of the lost areas for this committee to consider, which should give a flavour of the level of detail that each of these areas that we've had to consider. But I would give the assurance that certainly from a joint committee and now Shadow Executive member, that we feel very satisfied that that work has been undertaken very satisfactorily. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Since, I appreciate this is perhaps the foundation upon which we move forward, perhaps councillor Neil, if you'd like to approach the table and give us a more, an equally as enlightened report as councillor Broadhead, please make yourself comfortable.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we've only had two actual meetings, one on the 26th of April and then 11th of June. The overview and scrutiny working group has been having these meetings. The first one, we sort of scoped out what out of the, at that time about 80 areas had been dealt with by councillor Broadhead and Mayhays, councillor Mayhays. And we asked a series of questions and both were, all were answered very adequately. We felt we didn't go through all 80 items. We selected what looked like were going to be risks or possible problems, and we concentrated on those. And we were very satisfied with everything that we were told.
Oh, I was expecting something a little more, no, no, certainly we've all read the report, I'm sure, but no, you do seem to give some, well, more than just some degree of confidence, but I think you're giving a vote of confidence to what's been going on. And I'd like to, I think on behalf of all members of the committee, thank you very much for the efforts that the working group has provided in this process. Before we go to any questions, are there, I thought, thank you, councillor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just to really add a little bit more from what councillor Broadhead has actually presented and councillor Neil as chair of the disaggregation scrutiny group, that there is still a little bit of work left in terms of the disaggregation work stream. We've got some balance sheet items which we're still looking into. And just to reiterate the point that with some of the budget lines that have been disaggregated, they are a snapshot in time, particularly if you think about the ones within children's services, where we have disaggregated on the basis of actual service users, actual number of children. It is at that point in time when the work stream commenced, that was what the number was. And those of you who have been involved with the budget setting process or indeed are familiar with it, will know that we do have to have a starting point. So these numbers or the data that has actually come about from the disaggregation work stream provides a starting point by which we could then start to build the budget for the Shadow Authority. So I think that was really all I wished to add. We had, our last meeting was on 14th of June, we looked at a few more line items, the remaining line items, but I believe that that's actually detailed in the agenda papers for members to scrutinise and comment and ask questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Wakefield, I thought you caught my eye there.
Chair, would maybe appropriate time to go through those line-by-line items to ask a few questions? Yep.
Thank you. I've been advised that perhaps we ought to go through appendix A in sections, so perhaps we're to adopt that approach. Before we do that, councillor Newell, did you want to make a comment before we proceed?
I never needed the microphone. Just, it would be worth noting the number of people who were on that disaggregation committee who are now sitting here, otherwise we're asking questions of ourselves and presenting what we did ourselves. So it might be just...
For clarity, could you provide that for us, councillor Neil?
I currently don't have the whole list, I'm sorry. But everybody on here now...
Okay, I've just been advised, put your hands up if you are on it, that might be a good way of doing it.
Well, I'm the chairman, obviously.
Okay, so for the camera and for everybody, were you happy with that? Happy? Good, thank you.
I was going to say that there are, there were one or two that hadn't been completed, and those were deemed to be better be seen by this committee because we didn't want to duplicate on the work and waste office time.
Okay, so if we then proceed to appendix A, adults, any questions on that? Yeah, that's a good recommendation. I think if we were to have some officer guidance on each item as we go through, just a summary, so who would like to lead? Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll just do a few brief words of introduction in relation to the adult social care templates. So I think a couple of things I'd want to highlight. You'll see that in terms of the Christchurch population, the Christchurch percentage of population against the whole of Dorset is about 11%. What you'll see in expenditure in adult social care is the percentages are higher than 11%. That would be expected, given the demographics in Christchurch. So when you look at the overall percentages, which you can see, the overall percentage is 14.75%, that's in line with what we would expect from the demographics. And in contrast, the children's budgets were lower than the 11%. So I think that gives some kind of common sense benchmark in terms of the position. What you've got, just to explain, there's a grouping called service user related budgets. That's the expenditure of buying care and support for individuals. The next block is social work related budgets, that's majorly the staffing budgets. And then the final section is more about commissioning, so that's contracts, but also around areas, and you can see there, there's an income line, and that is the income line around the Better Care Fund. And just for members' information to say, the three local authorities, Dorset County Council, Bournemouth and Poole Unitaries, have been able to secure some money from the local government association to employ someone specifically to help us with looking at the funding from health that's coming to all three councils. Some of that's local agreements with health trusts. Much more of that is the Better Care Fund, which we know has come in three different tranches. And so that person is helping us look locally at that position and will help us not only with disaggregation, but moving on in discussion with the clinical commissioning group locally about how does that money then get divided, the income then get divided between two local authorities and not three. So I think that's probably all I wanted to say by way of introduction at this point, Chairman. Thank you.
Well, we are surrounded by experts. Councillor Wakefield, I'm looking at you firstly, in case, or then to councillor Dalton Gibson or anybody else who would like to have some input. It's just that I heard you grunt a little bit during that. I just thought perhaps you might have a comment, councillor Wakefield.
Gosh, I didn't know, was that loud? With regards to the Better Care Fund, can you explain the elements of the CCG involvement in that? Given the judicial review that's ongoing at the moment in London, would there be any fallout with regards to that income? fallout with regards to that income if the judicial review was found in favour of the people of court?
So in relation to, I suppose the short answer, the short answer would be no. So I think the, I don't think that it would make a difference. So the Better Care Fund, we've had different tranches of Better Care Fund money, but the largest proportion has come via the CCG to local authorities. We have also had some direct elements of funding for the Better Care Fund. What we then have to do with Better Care Fund is have an agreement, which is agreed through the Health and Wellbeing Boards about the expenditure of the Better Care Fund and also what that's going to mean for the public in terms of outcomes. So what we will need to do is obviously we'll have a different footprint for two Health and Wellbeing Boards, so we're going to need to not only look at the money, we're going to look at the specific schemes, but most importantly, keeping the outcomes for our public through that mechanism, because that's the commitment that we really need to ensure that outcomes for the public are delivered in a way that produces no detriment and disadvantage to individuals in the process of local government review.
And the fact that we'd be able to utilise the Better Care Fund monies from Christchurch and Poole and Bournemouth, will that give you better opportunities to increase outcomes for people?
I think it gives us, it gives us an opportunity to look at the needs of that total community as well as individual communities within it. I think one of the things that we do just have to signal is that there is some, that there are some national discussions still about the continuing Better Care Fund. So in addition to what we have locally, there's still some national work going on about the Better Care Fund. But yes, what we would be developing is a Better Care Fund plan with health colleagues, which would be approved by a new Health and Wellbeing Board, which would meet the needs of all the population of Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole.
Councillor.
Yeah, yeah, just to confirm with these figures, just to make it clear, I think for everybody that's on the disaggregation committee, that we were actually, obviously, these figures for the adults and children's are probably pretty much, probably easier to work out because they relate to more actuals rather than some of the other relating to which we're going to come later on to sort of place in environment, we're a bit more of a, perhaps more of an estimate, shall we say. So I think these figures are probably a lot more accurate than some others potentially.
Thank you councillor Neil.
It wasn't actually a guess, it was actually a moment in time, it was actually the numbers. And as you can imagine, with care packages, it's very, very liquid, it moves around quite a bit from one month to another.
Thank you. Any other questions on this element? Any other comments from officers perhaps? Well, that's quite nice. Shall we move on to, we'll now move to page 24 on community, if we may. And we're not quite sure which officer is happy to proceed on this, so we're looking for a volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman. So this was, this is, this is interesting, this was a series of budgets which the county include in an adults and communities department and would be treated slightly differently in Poole and in Bournemouth, so they're aggregated as a communities. You can see they have a mix, there's a mixture, there's a great mixture of services in here. And obviously what you can see is that they produce some very significant variations in percentages. So there may be ones that you would want to explore in a bit more detail. And in terms of ones that I might want to comment on are the last two, housing prevention and housing prevention disabled facilities. They are very much tied to the activity within Christchurch. So again, as with children and adults, they're very much tied to the individual work. If we go to the top, the archives and museums, that relates to facilities in Christchurch and proportion of the already partnership archive service across Dorset, Poole and Bournemouth. And again, the libraries is very much based on the library activity within Christchurch. There are matters that relate to property, and I don't know whether Adam Richards might want to comment on more of the property related elements on that.
Thank you Chair. With regards to a couple of the property lines, you have net budgets here, so you have expenditure, you have income, and then you have a net budget. When you analyse detail of that, the only items that relate to the Christchurch area are some of those income lines to do with rents received from specific investment properties or rents received from elderly persons dwellings that are let to Tricuro.
Councillor Neil, anything you'd like to add to that? No? Thank you. Any questions from members? Well, it appears that both officers, working groups and members have done an exceptional job, so thank you very much indeed for that. We now need to move to page 25, corporate services. Mr Richards please.
Thank you. If we went through the items shown under corporate services, generally these have been disaggregated either by population, by specific cost basis in relation to the area of service, there's some based on usage, and in some areas like financial services, you've got a situation where you have a top slicing to recognise that the Dorset area will continue to provide a service, that that current activity or area of service currently provides. So for example, with financial services, you've got a situation where the Dorset area will continue to provide the administration to the pension fund. So what we've done is we've top sliced that cost out of the equation and then it's the residual that we've apportioned based on population. So very different methods have been applied to the various different templates, but it's a mixture of those that I have outlined.
Thank you. We are concentrating on disaggregation and Christchurch, we don't want to start flying the flag for other areas at the moment, we need to make sure that everybody's happy there. Any questions on that area please? Councillor Wakefield.
Don't know what CSU means, so could somebody enlighten me please? Under ICT and Communications.
Councillor Neil, you seem to be occupying somebody's chair, perhaps you might like to...
Just to say that CSU stands for Customer Service Unit.
Thank you very much indeed. Any other questions or any other summaries, anybody? My word, isn't this going well? Terribly well. So page 27 now, central finance. Let me guess, Mr Richards.
Thank you Chair. The work in this section has been detailed and thorough. We've gone through each of the funding streams that are referenced within this section and working with officers from Dorset County Council established the basis of that funding split between the two new unitary authorities. In some instances, we've used population, in some instances, for example, the precept from the council tax, it's very clear with regards to the amount of council tax generated within the Christchurch area on behalf of Dorset, clearly that would apply to the BCP unitary. Some of the other areas are a little bit more complicated, certainly when it comes to business rates, but we've taken advice, we've looked to best practice and we've come up with the relevant apportionment between the two new unitaries.
Sorry Chair, I was just wondering what is the four block model, because it is mentioned on a couple of occasions. Thank you.
Well, could spend your night on that one I think. But the background to it is, when it comes to the Revenue Support Grant, the four block model was the methodology by which the actual Revenue Support Grant in detail was then allocated between the different functions of a local authority and then within that, between local authorities. So it was that basis and we all had to remind ourselves, because you know, the last time it was actively used was some time ago, since then Revenue Support Grant has just been dwindling it down every single year, but we had to remind ourselves of the basis. Once we remind ourselves of the basis, we then, you know, came to a methodology for splitting it between the two local authorities and we have shared that with, as part of the business rate baseline, with officers of AMH CLG who have signed off as a reasonable approach to take.
And if I can, that's fantastic for that, that's a lot better than the whole night, just a couple of minutes. So I'm looking at the interest paid on long term borrowing. It says population in notes as to how it was worked out, so how can you allocate something along those lines? I was just trying to get my own spotlight, not a percentage of something, so please, finger pointing.
Population has been used as a holding position. As I think was referenced earlier this evening, more work is needed in regards to the balance sheet items and work is continuing in regards to the balance sheet items. One of those balance sheet items is debt and we need to go through a little bit more due diligence before we come up with a proposal. And once we've established that, then that apportionment would likely change if it's anything different to population.
And thank you Chair. That was going to be my next question, is what would the ongoing debt be? So what would the risk be to the new local authority going forward with regards to that debt figure?
I think the answer to question, Chair, is that we need to come to an agreement between the two new unitary authorities and once you've come to that agreement, you'll be in a better position to assess the risk.
Oh. I need to turn the page. And so the last one was the other way, reserves. So money in the bank as it were, so again, how would you be working out any reserves that would be then going transferred into the new unitary authority?
Similar response Chair, in the sense that reserves will be a balance sheet item and we need to agree a set of principles to be applied for the 1st of April 2019, based on the 31st of March 2019 position. Until we've concluded that negotiation, then you won't be in a position where you can be definitive as to what reserves will potentially transfer, but that's more to do with the heading of the reserves. The actual values of the reserves will depend on the value of Dorset County Council's reserves as at the 31st of March next year. And you know, that would be an issue for the sovereign authority up until that point in time.
And three years Chair, I'm sure we look forward to a very good negotiating position from your good selves with Dorset County Council, so that we all get the best value out of that. Sorry Debbie.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Spittle.
Thank you Mr Chairman. I've just got two questions. First one, precepts. You refer to Christchurch precept, is that the total of the two, from the two parish councils, Burton and Hearn, or is there another precept?
The parish council precept is an issue for the parish councils to show within their books. What Dorset County Council show as a precept within their books is the amount that they preset on Christchurch councils and, not Christchurch councils, but Christchurch residents by their council tax. So that is the council tax collected from Christchurch households on behalf of Dorset County Council.
And the other question I've got at the bottom, where you say there are no rural areas in Christchurch, whereas I actually am councillor for St Catherine's Hill and Hearn, where there is a large amount of rural area. So I'm slightly puzzled about that. Would that also, knowing that the amount of other grants that we get, would that not be from, I believed actually from Dorset, as I said, I am puzzled that you've got just a dash and it's 0%?
My understanding Chair is that the analysis of the rural services grant showed that actually none of that grant related to any of the Christchurch area and it was all applicable to the rural of the rest of Dorset County Council as it currently stands.
Sorry, we have a queue, I think I was councillor Bath followed by councillor Clark, thank you.
Thank you Chairman. Just to go back on one of the questions that councillor Spittle asked about precepts, can the officer explain why the precept for Christchurch is 12.4%, but our population is lower than that?
Because the precept is based on properties and property, you know, number of council tax, the council tax base for Christchurch, whereas clearly population is different to the number of properties in the tax base.
Thank you Chair. So to summarise, as far as I can tell, the disaggregation summary on 4.1 shows a figure of 29.9 million approximately, which is the expenditure if I read it right. And on page 28, the central finance total is 31.2. I know it's a very draft, it's a draft figure at the moment, but am I right in thinking that those are the sort of total figures? Or is that a bit simple?
Just to confirm, that is not a bit simple, I think that's a fair assessment.
Are you satisfied councillor Clark?
Yes, I'm satisfied.
Thank you. Before we move further, could I ask Debbie Ward, Chief Executive of Dorset, please to offer some summary towards this, if you possibly could please?
Thank you very much Chairman. I think what you have in front of you is the detail that's been arrived at from the work of officers from both the county council and from Bournemouth and Christchurch and Poole, in arriving and testing and proving whether or not the amounts of money both have a sensible and a reasonable base, as well as a financial and factual base. We've tried to work to actuals wherever possible, which explains some of the figures and some of the percentages, and each one of those has then been tested and worked through. We've always known, I think was said right at the start of this disaggregation process, that there would be some that would be more difficult than others to arrive at a completion at this point in time, and certainly those points have been made throughout the process. So the balance sheet items that Adam Richards has described very clearly do need some good negotiation and discussions and we're working through that in principled way, being led by principles. We do have a mechanism whereby we can look for external validation and assistance if that's required. At this point in time, it hasn't been... At this point in time, it hasn't been required. We've worked very closely together, very challenging and some officers have spent considerable amounts of time looking at different ways of measuring these to answer the very reasonable questions that I think many of you have posed as well. But I think in terms of arriving at a reasonable and a sensible disaggregation, that's all the services, then we're very clearly there. There will need to be final work done as we move to the closing date from the county council closing and the new authority setting up. So that where we've taken positions that are a snapshot of time, then we will have to update those. The next steps on the disaggregation work are very much more about the individuals, where we'll be transferring the work and the care for those individuals and that's been done again in great detail and will take some time to complete. Thank you Chair.
Turn to the Vice Chair, councillor Smith.
Thank you. I just wondered if there are any particular specific issues that Dorset County Council are worried about with reference to the disaggregation?
I missed the pertinent part of that question and the air conditioning is a bit noisy, sorry.
I'm just wondering if there's anything specific within the disaggregation that Dorset County Council may be particularly concerned with or is everything equally of concern?
Okay. We are very satisfied that the process that we've gone through has been a reasoned and a challenging one to make sure that we've arrived at figures that are real, realistic and do represent the true position in terms of the expenditure that's in Christchurch. One of the issues that has been, I think, most challenging is like most authorities with upper tier responsibilities, we are facing in-year reductions. We are having to make significant savings across all of our services, including particularly our children's and adults because of the amounts of money that are being spent. We are concerned that we have dealt with those as properly and as fully as we can throughout this process and we have shared all of our savings plans in as much detail as we possibly can. The consideration and the concern that we have at this point is making sure that we then do follow that through and that that expenditure and the number of people that we are working with and the budget plans actually do come to a reasonable conclusion at the end of this financial year so that we do stay true to the figures that we've worked on at this point in time. It's a risk which is very familiar, I think, to many councils who've worked on these budgets.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we could move on now please to appendix B and C, if we could perhaps have a volunteer officer who might be able to introduce those items? Is it to do with a past paper or?
It was just a quick question.
Quick question.
Very quick question. Oh bless you. So it was looking at something really mundane like parking services. It says there's no, I gather PND is pay and display income in Christchurch. It says there's no income. Does that because at the moment it goes to Dorset County?
No, it goes to Christchurch.
Okay, so I was just wondering why there's no income?
Because it doesn't come to the county council. The money there actually goes direct to the borough council.
Right, okay, so street lighting management then. It says based on percent on street lighting and percent use for street lighting, PFI, is that private finance initiative? So if that is the case, is there an ongoing cost to that?
It is a private finance initiative. The full details of the ongoing liabilities have been part of that discussion and that process and that's the apportionment that would maintain that.
Thank you. Chair, that's great.
If there are no other questions on these items, I'd like to move forward to the item appendix B and C if an officer would like to propose that. But can I just conclude, are there any further questions regarding the items thus far? Councillor Spittle.
Sorry to come in at the last minute. On page 24, on housing prevention, you've mentioned income of supporting people income on population basis. It was my understanding that supporting people had ceased or was in the way in the realms of becoming ceased. Could you explain how you actually arrive at that figure?
The figure's an actual. It is the money that's been spent on housing provisions within the Christchurch area and those are all to do with very specific individual needs in terms of housing. So it has its foundations in supporting people, although the supporting people grant in those terms has changed. It is the money that the county council has continued to provide and to make provision in those housing requirements.
So if I may just come back on that. So given that it was anticipated it was going to be finished, can I assume then that in fact Christchurch has got a bonus?
In meeting the needs of people in that area and it's on that basis that that provision of budget has been made. There are those services and supported housing needs that are required for that population and that's where the provision is made for.
Mindful of the time that we have this evening, we're now going to move on to appendix B and C and I'm looking as a, oh, Jan, would you like to?
I'll start off on the partnership one, determine if that's okay. So appendix B, so I'll just comment on that. Appendix B is a drawing together of the partnerships that exist between the, mainly between Dorset County Council, Paul and Bournemouth councils and what we've been trying to do, but they do also look at districts. So what we've been trying to do is bring together all those different partnerships and look at the current expenditure, look at again how for the county council, one would understand the reach in Christchurch and that will then help us look between the two new unitary councils, what the percentage of financial input from both councils would then be. So the partnership list you've got here is very diverse and some of this is still some work in progress, but we've placed it on the table in order to give you a view of the kind of partnerships. So if you look at, for instance, the first one, the youth funding service, that's a partnership which has been on a pan-Dorset basis for, I think probably three, four years. What we've done is looked at the current split between Dorset County, Paul and Bournemouth unitaries. We then looked at the percentage of activity for the youth funding service in Christchurch, looking at that not only in a snapshot, but looking at, you know, does that make sense over a bit of time? And that will lead us to look at the future percentages between the two new unitaries. I happen to chair the youth funding service multi-agency board and we've had a recent financial discussion strategically about the future and this work has enabled us to look at what we think is a reasonable percentage split between the future Dorset County Council and the Bournemouth Christchurch and Paul Council. So as an illustration, that's the way that this document is being used. But as you can see, we've got a real diverse nature of partnerships between us.
Thank you. No questions were presented in advance on this item. Could we go to item C or appendix C if you'd like to continue? Volunteering there.
Volunteering. Appendix C presents the current partnership budget of East Dorset and Christchurch Borough Council. I think that's a sum total of 12.2 million pounds and it presents how that is split between Christchurch and East Dorset councils for the purposes of, if you like, fairness and consistency with the approach we've taken with Dorset County Council.
Members, we've had a extensive discussion on this. Before we go to any recommendations or moves, do we have any other questions? Councillor Clark?
I just wondered, the money for, I mean it shows 5.8 million for an appendix C for Christchurch share, how does that come into the disaggregation figures that we've looked at in appendix A? Or how does it come into the overall sort of scheme of things?
To declare it doesn't come into appendix A. Appendix A relates to the budget of Dorset County Council and how that relates to expenditure they spend in the Christchurch area. The 5.8 million pounds is expenditure by Christchurch Borough Council on its shared costs with East Dorset District Council, sorry.
Yeah, so that's the Christchurch District Council amount. Yeah, you're right, okay.
Thank you. We've had extensive discussions on this. It's probably one of, well, it's the first decision that we're going to have to make on this panel. Before we move to any recommendation, is there anything that any members might wish to add to this? If not, I'll move to ask the Vice Chair to speak.
Thank you. We've come up with a recommendation that I'm hoping all members will be happy with. I will read it out fairly slowly to make sure that everybody hears it. Firstly, number one, that having scrutinised the detail of the reports on service disaggregation, taking, including taking account of the earlier scrutiny undertaken by the Joint Audit and Scrutiny Working Group on disaggregation, the audit and scrutiny committee recommends to the shadow executive committee that the disaggregation as set out in the appendices to the report be approved. Secondly, that the audit and scrutiny committee further scrutinises the output of disaggregation relating to assets and liabilities when available. And thirdly, that the committee receives future updates on the next steps relating to disaggregation to be delivered by the BCP programme.
Do we have a second, councillor Wakefield? If we could take a vote on those members that are minded, oh, sorry. Would you like, Mr Richans?
Chair, if I may, my understanding is this is the former Christchurch and Paul Shadow Overview and Scrutiny Committee, not an audit committee.
Apologies, misreading.
Thank you very much indeed for that. Councillor Wakefield is still prepared to second it. Could all members that are in favour show their hands please? Is that unanimity? That would be the unanimity. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you for that. We'll, thank you very much indeed. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, item seven, and that's the shadow executive committee reports. Looking at the agenda, I understand we would like to have some input on, sorry, council tax discounts and the local tax support scheme. Mr Rich, just an overview from Mr Richans please. Or, or any other volunteers by the set?
So just to highlight the report, the aim of the report is to?
Sorry, since, thank you very much indeed for that tip there. Could you introduce yourself? You don't have the correct name in front of you, this being both videoed and a recorded verbiage.
I do apologise, yes. My name's Paul Hadson. I'm the partnership manager of the Stavallian-Paul partnership, enacting head of resident benefits for Bournemouth Borough Council. In line colleague is Alan Fletcher, the operations manager for Stavallian-Paul partnership. Thank you. Thank you Chair. Just a brief highlight, the aim to the report here is to create one discount and one council tax support scheme for our 180,000 properties and 30,000 claimants for April 2019. Alongside this, our aim is the alignment of policies where possible to align to universal credit payments that are in place in the claim process that customers go through. Taking account in this report is we're working to the financial restraints placed upon us in the medium term financial plan and also aiming for clarity for council taxpayers for April. Operationally where we deliver the services, this report will also give us operational efficiencies which we're required to deliver in April 2019. If I may briefly detail the impacts of this report, we're looking for approval from the cabinet, the executive committee is going forward, to endorse an empty home scheme of approximately 0% discount as detailed in item 15 of the report and also to consult on an aligned council tax support scheme, which would in basic terms called a 20% liability scheme. Just for background, this affects working age claimants and approximately at this point in time, we consider through the alignment approximately 700 people of the 30,000 claimants would be impacted by it. I'm happy to take any questions from members in line to the report. Thank you.
Please councillor. Thank you Chair. In the background detail on item number three, it states that you're expected to have all the policies aligned within 24 months. As these are elements of council tax, does that mean that the council tax harmonisation also has to be completed within 24 months or is that going to be dealt with totally separately?
To answer the question, council tax harmonisation is part of a completely separate process. It doesn't have to be harmonised within 24 months. That is still a process that is ongoing. This refers to the, if you like, the other policies or general policies of the council such as council tax discounts, such as a local council tax support scheme, where the government expectation is that we have a common policy in place within 24 months from investing day of the 1st of April 2019.
Thank you for that clarification. Councillor Dalton Gibson.
Yeah, I just had a slightly sort of different question looking at the programme update. I was just a bit puzzled why this overview and scrutiny committee appears on the first item but doesn't actually appear on council tax discounts and things. Is there a sort of reason for that? I'm not sure who put this programme together, but if you look down on say the second two pages, we don't appear on the first two items, we do appear on the third and fourth on those two pages. I just wondered why we were not on there. Do you see what I mean?
Seeking a little bit of advice councillor, thank you.
Sorry Chair, which paper specifically you're referring to councillor? The forward plan?
Yeah, the forward plan. On the first item, on the first page, you know, the programme update, you know, inside the authority, the overview scrutiny committee have the opportunity, but I noticed on this item it doesn't include it and I just wondered why some items had it on and some didn't. I'd sort of presumed it might be to do with whether we were going to be involved in them, but we seem to be involved in this when we're not on the list. I'm just a bit confused by it.
I suspect we also have a volunteer to answer the question. Jane Portman.
Thank you Chair. I think the forward plan, which is the document that councillor Dalton Gibson's referring to, I think on behalf of officers, we'd like to declare it a work in progress and say that as a matter of principle, this overview and scrutiny panel will be consulted on all papers that are going to the shadow executive committee. So the scheduling that has been prepared has ensured that there is an overview and scrutiny meeting in advance of, but after the papers have been published for every shadow executive committee between now and the 1st of April. Shadow Executive Committee between now and the 1st of April, thus giving this committee opportunity to scrutinise any and all papers. So whilst the document might be a little bit variable, the principle is very solid.
So, send you so happy to, I'm asking questions again Chair. So, the executive summary says about consulting on this, so once this, if this goes through tonight and then goes on to the executive, I'd just like to know how you're going to consult on this particular piece of work.
Thank you, yes, we will be consulting with the directly impacted groups and also other council taxpayers within this, in a set process that we've undertaken on several times before, in line with the legislation set for the council tax support scheme. So we'll be going out to customers seeking their opinions on the levels that we're proposing here, and also considering any other alternatives they bring forward. Alongside that is a full equality impact assessment to see how each of those groups are affected. That's then brought back for review, and I would say in the past, often that consultation has resulted in changes to our policies affecting protected groups, for example.
And just for those people that are watching tonight and listening to this, can you just mention who is likely going to be affected? We've put it in the papers, but people that are watching this don't have that detail.
Thank you. So we're talking about claimants of council tax support of working age that are not listed there as a protected group, and also the exempted protected group are people of pensionable age. So it's people claiming benefits, topping up benefits that may be, for example, where they are working with an allowance given to them. So working age customer summarises those impacted by this report.
And did I read that it's mainly people in Christchurch?
This scheme will be for the whole of BCP, but at this point in time, Christchurch have an 8 and a half% liability scheme, where Poole and Bournemouth operate a 20% liability scheme, so it's aligning the scheme as a proposal to 20%, but the other changes there are across all of the areas to try and align us to universal credit to make it much more consistent and easier for the customer to claim in that context.
That's very helpful, thank you.
I'd love to be guilty of coming up with this question myself, but I have been prodded. What area might there be for overview and scrutiny to engage in this? Are there any risks, any problems that you foresee that we need to engage with?
With regards to engagement, when we have the actual survey back, I'm expecting there to be extensive engagement with yourselves on that. Alongside that will be our equality impact assessment to see the impact upon those groups once we fully undertake the modelling. So it could be within that that there may be some proposals from yourself for less impact on some of those people directly affected.
Thank you, yes, yeah, when might that be? Because, again, we've got to be one step ahead of the game here with the amount of time that we have, so when looking at our Forward Plan, how might we be able to engage with that?
Chair, if I answer the question in the sense that I think it's the Shadow Executive in December or November, no, I think it's in December, we're receiving a report post-consultation recommending a scheme for 1920 implementation. So it'll be as part of that process that we'll come back to this group.
I'd just like to ask members how they would like to see that. councillor Wakefield, I think, again, you might have something to say there, please.
Thank you Chair. Again, if it is prior to the executive seeing the paper in December, it'd be quite, I don't know whether you feel that at this meeting in December, that we could examine the detail of that report and then comment on that report to go back to the executive.
councillor Spittle.
Thank you Chair. Could I refer to the financial implications on the various proposals of the discount? And I noticed that the proposal is that for Christchurch it's going to be a 0% discount, whereas before we had been quite generous. Should this not be on it, or had you looked into the possibility of it being on a sliding scale? Because surely on the 1st of April 2019, there are some people who are going to get quite a large shock.
With regards to the discount process, it's not so much a sliding scale, we set them for set periods of time and people become aware of those. A lot of these people would be midway through a process, in some of those cases, we will notify them before that date with approvals given to advise them what's likely to happen from April. That's consistent with what we've undertaken in the past with the Borough of Poole and Bournemouth to advise people of that change. Regarding a sliding scale, we haven't considered that in this report, this is for us trying to get alignment for the April 2019 for all our customers.
Thank you, although I'm slightly concerned, you know, because it is going to be such a big rise, but anyway, we'll see how it goes.
We will be following this up, as has been recommended. I understand councillor Barth you'd like to comment.
Thank you Chairman. In Christchurch, we have a discount for single person occupancy, I don't see, well, I can't find any mention of it here.
Thank you, yes Chair, single person occupancy is a discount that is actually in our legislation and not for us to amend within this, so that's a national discount that applies.
Thank you. Any other questions on that, else we can perhaps move on? Happy to move on? Thank you very much indeed. Any other updates that would be now consolidated medium term financial plan, MTFB? Mr Richards, thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'll give a brief introduction to the report, this is the fourth consolidated medium term financial plan update report that either the Shadow Executive or the previous joint committee has received. The report sets out for the first time, I think is part of that process, the national policy context, and it reminds us that actually the government are assuming council tax increases as part of the spending review that they announced in 2015. It provides local context, and in figure two provides what is known as the graph of doom with regards to adding the government reductions in funding of Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole together, and highlighting that up until and including 1920, that's likely to amount to 93 million pounds per annum as part of that process. The next section of the report introduces the budget cycle and aims to give members that reassurance that we have a structured process for developing our budget for 1920. We've moved through stage one, which is a top-down process, and established that we are aiming to try and identify savings efficiencies of between 14 and 15 million pounds. We are now starting stage two, which is the bottom-up detailed process, using the detailed budgets of Bournemouth, Poole, Christchurch and the disaggregation information, working with the delivery boards to try and establish the detailed budgets for 1920 and including all the necessary savings and efficiencies plans. And then when we move into October to December, we'll move into that refinement and review process. The next section of the report provides you with an update of the medium term financial plan, and in figure four identifies that at this moment in time, we have a funding gap identified for 1920 of just under 13 million pounds, or between 13 million pounds and 13.8 million pounds, depending on which scenario we're actually looking at, and that includes just over a million pounds' worth of savings identified as part of the process. The next section of the report identifies and considers the transition and transformation costs of the process, and figure five identifies that we have established 14.7 million pounds to help fund our transition and transformation arrangements, but highlights that that is for all the phases of this project as it currently stands. So that's not just phase one or phase two, that will be the ambition around phase three at this moment in time. The final section of the report introduces, I think it's appendix C to this report, which is a schedule of the key financial decisions made by each of the sovereign councils to ensure that there is awareness by the Shadow Executive of those decisions and their potential implications on the new authority. Chair, happy to take any questions.
Before I rein in, is there anything? councillor Pope.
Thank you Chair. When you gave me some of your time to explain about transition and transformation costs about a month or two ago, you said that the capitalisation direction had been refused, but the department had said, come back to us again, and you told me that you wouldn't in any case have gone back to them to ask for this. What I really wanted to know, Adam, is how soon can we do this? Because it seems important that we should make the case for this, given the limited amount of time that we have and the fact that we're pushed for cash.
Thank you councillor. Just to respond to that then, in the sense that we meet with MHCLG on a regular basis, and every time we meet with them, we ask for consideration for, if you like, a government grant or government contribution towards this process. Every time we meet with them, they turn down that, they say no, but they say keep asking, so we keep asking.
Would it help if we made a recommendation from this committee, I don't know whether this is possible, that they get on and give us something?
I'll leave that with members to make that decision as to whether they consider that would be helpful.
Yes, quite, before we come to councillor, but any comments from members on that statement round the table, councillor? Certainly, was just really any feedback on this particular matter first. Other than that, I'm not quite sure how is best perceived, Jane Portman please.
Just a suggestion Chair, that if it was the view of this panel, that this was indeed, as councillor Pope has set out, a significant issue that needed follow-up, that it might be, there might be a recommendation from this overview and scrutiny panel to the Shadow Executive Committee to recommend to them that they continue to press via the section 1.5 on one officer for this issue to be seriously considered by MHCLG officials. That could be the phraseology of a recommendation, should you wish to. That would provide some emphasis.
Thank you very much, you have put precisely what I was trying to express. I really think this is very important, mainly because we were led to believe in 2016 that this money would be forthcoming, that the government was really behind this, and I think for them to continue to refuse to give us some money towards transition is an indication that perhaps other expectations will not be met either, in terms of savings and so on. So I think it's important from the public perception that they see that the government are behind this transition and not just backing back from it. So yes, I would like to, something to go forward from this committee.
Yeah, this was it, thank you very much. How does the committee feel about the wording, I'm whilst quoting you verbatim, that Jane Portman's put forward? Would we be in agreement with such a statement from the panel? We have consensus, so thank you very much indeed for that, and we'll take that back to the executive.
No, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Barth and then, oh, thank you.
Thank you. I just wondered if the officer could put in context the funding gap that we see here for the BCP unitary versus what the funding gap is in Dorset in comparison, please.
I think that's a difficult question to answer, because clearly I am the interim section 1.5 one officer for the BCP unitary, I haven't got any day-to-day involvement in the Dorset areas budgets process for 1920, so I would be unable to answer that question. Sorry Chair.
Fine, thank you Chair, just want to try to get my head around a few of the figures, as Adam knows I usually do. Can you clarify first of all, in paragraph 21, that the 35% savings and efficiencies would have to be delivered prior to April 1st have in fact been made or will be made? This was part of the original argument for the merging of the, or the creation of the new council?
The 35% was an assumption that local partnerships made within their financial model. Clearly that financial model was put together in 2016, and since 2016, we've put together the 17, 18 and 18, 19 budgets of all the relevant sovereign councils. As part of that process, savings and efficiencies have been included, that would probably have been included within the financial model of local partnerships. The most significant one that jumps to mind is the work between Bournemouth and Poole in sharing a corporate services as part of their 18, 19 budget.
Is there a guarantee that you will have actually achieved the model figure of 35% or exceeded it? Because clearly if we haven't, then there are implications in terms of risks for the actual amount of savings that would be achieved over the first few years of the new authority.
The savings that were delivered by creating corporate services between Bournemouth and Poole, from memory, were circa 3.8 million pounds, so I would suggest that the 35% figure has been achieved.
Okay, fine, thank you. The annual savings are going to be, it says here, from the original model, 9.2 million, with a one-off costs or one-off costs of 11.8 million. You're looking here in the figures on figure five and the information below of transition costs, which I'm assuming are all part and parcel of the one-off costs of 14.7 million, plus the possibility of a further 1.16 million, i.e. totaling somewhere in the region of 15.9 million, which are effectively, as I understand, one-off costs for ensuring that the council, new council is operative. That's significantly higher than the original predicted model, that the model was predicting. That must again create some risks. As I understand it, I may actually be barking up a false tree.
I wouldn't suggest you were barking up a tree councillor Brooke. What I would point out to you however, is that in section 23, we are talking and highlighting that local partnerships identified that we needed, based on their assessment in 2016, to be spending around 11.8 million pounds to, if you like, create the future Dorset proposal. In section 24, what then happened was PricewaterhouseCoopers indicated that actually if you went deeper, more along the lines of phase three, that potentially you would have to incur significant additional costs over 11.8 million pounds in order to achieve that transition. What figure five does is indicate at this moment in time, the best estimate of the resources that are available to fund the entire process, both phase two and phase three as part of that process, and it also identifies that that is the best estimate at this moment in time, because clearly that's an estimate of reserves at future point in time, and sovereign councils can make decisions up until the 31st of March 2019 that potentially could impact on those resources available. So clearly within that, there So clearly within that, there will be an element of risk as we move and transition into that new position and that new unitary authority.
Explanation, Chair, could I suggest then, in line with what's already been suggested, that there is a risk element within what we've been discussing that we need to look at as time moves on as part of that process? I would certainly like to agree with you there and also it would echo a question that I might have asked at the very end is what other risks do we need to look out for in the future? And I think that adds to that register. We'll note that at the end of this item. We have councillor Clark followed by councillor Parker.
Thank you Chair. I've come back to harmonisation, which I mentioned earlier in the evening, seems a long time ago now. We've got two potential scenarios for harmonisation. I just wondered where we are, it's actually not in the, I can't see it on the forward, Shadow Executive Forward Plan. I just wondered where we are with the harmonisation and obviously it makes almost a million pounds difference between the two scenarios that we're actually showing currently. Just who would be able to take that?
So just to confirm, no formal decision has been made with regards to council tax harmonisation policy in regards to the new BCP unitary authority through the Shadow Executive and before that, the work of the Joint Committee. The task and finish group had fed back probably on five or six occasions. As part of that process, they've identified some principles and some parameters of which they're working to. As part of those parameters, I think out of, I think we're up to 22 models, five adhered to those parameters of which model M, which is scenario one and model G, scenario two, adhere as part of that process. There has been a dialogue with the relevant officers of MHCLG and recently with the relevant ministers at MHCLG with regards to what our local preference parameters are. At this moment in time, we are waiting for clarification from MHCLG as to any guidance or any direction that they potentially would like to give us as part of this process.
Thank you. And to conclude councillor Parker.
Thank you Chairman. With regard to the reserves, looking at these figures, could I ask, have any sort of anticipated effects of the judicial review been taken into account on reducing the reserves?
With regards to the reserves shown in appendix B, they reflect any costs that have been incurred up to date or are forecast to be incurred as part of that process. But clearly if the government gives specific direction as to how certain costs have been defunded, they potentially may impact upon these reserves as shown. I think in a wider sense, it just references that risk that I spoke about earlier in the sense that these are snapshot at point in time of four sovereign councils and those four sovereign councils need to balance their 18, 19 budgets, they need to do everything they need to do up until the 31st of March and that could, based on any of that activity, change the numbers as presented. And you know, what the part of the process is just to keep a weathered eye on their activity so that we can potentially then anticipate it as part of our budget setting process for 2019, 20.
Thank you Chairman. So it's clearly a snapshot at the moment. So when we look at this later in the year, it could be a significantly different figure. Thank you.
Well, I was about to ask the question, how do we move forward on this? And it will be, I think, a continuous agenda item. So we'll take up the comments by councillor Brooke and our work programming later on. We're now going to move forward then to item 10, which is parliamentary orders. And if we could have an update please first of all, well, Jane Portman, would you be happy to kick off?
Well, in light of the time Chair, I just wondered if it might be possible just to simply say this is an update on the parliamentary orders and both myself, Julie and Ozzie Thorpe will be happy to take any questions you may have.
I think that's acceptable. Any members have any particular questions or if you have anything that's, you know, perhaps not for this meeting, we could always email them out to you. Anything, any burning issues from members? No? Okay, in that matter, we'll go along to item 11, which is senior appointments and I think we'll go to Jane Portman. Yeah. If you'd like to adopt the, yeah.
Chair, if I can cover this in the absence of Saskia De Vries, I would propose we adopt the same expediency as Jane Portman suggested for the previous item. It is a, as close as can be possible, a mirror of the tier one or chief executive appointment paper that the Shadow Executive Committee considered and approved at its last meeting, but I'm happy to answer any questions that members may have.
In the interest of efficient council, I think we're not dismissing these items, we're just giving you an opportunity to discuss them outside of this meeting. So if members are content with that, we will now move on to item eight, which is overview and scrutiny committee forward plans. I'll hand over to Lindsay.
Thank you Chairman. As it says on your agenda, I just want to highlight that in your August session, you'll have a detailed opportunity to bring together a proper forward plan in a facilitated session with the Centre for Public Scrutiny. So this item is very much just to say, is there anything particular that you need to look at in August? Obviously as we've gone through the meeting, I've looked to capture anything. And just to highlight, I do have those two recommendations that we'll be taking forward to the executive committee. But in terms of material items for August for the ONS committee, I haven't noted anything in particular and the current executive forward plan only lists an update. I don't know if there's any other items officers can advise that are going to the August meeting?
At this moment in time Chair, we're keeping that under review, bearing in mind as this panel will be all too well aware, there are several moving parts in this programme at the moment. So although Julie Noskthorpe, the programme director, will be presenting his monthly programme update, we will nearer the time, consider whether there are any other items that need to be considered by the Shadow Executive Committee. There's a lot can happen in a month.
I just really, again, for efficient council, we didn't have any recommendations before the meeting, but I would like to personally recommend to all members of this committee that whilst we are not in a meeting, there's no harm in talking, emailing and getting some ideas together. This is a process that will be working, I think, quite reactively in many ways, but there's no harm in being proactive at the same time. And I know we've gone over time this evening and apologies for that. I don't wish to curtail this meeting on, you know, and say, right, let's just dismiss this item here, but I think the agenda for our work programme is really important and I would really appreciate perhaps in reflection after this meeting, if there are any things that come up, please do let us know. And I think unless there are any other comments on that, I'd be happy to move on to the calendar item. Yeah, and just, yes, thank you. And just really to gain your confidence and authority that I may be permitted to go ahead and organise some of those agenda items with the vice chair and officers. We're not going away just, you know, riding on our horse. We're riding on this journey together and I'd like to think that you can, you know, rely upon us to do a lot of the work for you. So please do get your recommendations to us. Over to you, yes please.
Thank you Chair. Calendar of meetings at item nine. Members have had all these dates circulated to them in advance. So these are proposals for your calendar of meetings going forward through the year. And just to highlight that these track the executive committee dates so that if you do need to input into any items, you have the facility to do so. The only addition I would make to this list that you have is in November, there are a couple of options that I can propose to you. The 1st of November, which is unfortunately a clash with the business improvement panel in Paul. The other option would be the 5th of November, but for obvious reasons, that may limit public engagement perhaps. So there are two options there for you in addition to the list, but if you're happy, perhaps we can agree some of those dates now.
Well, if you don't mind me, sorry. Would you like to come to the table please and use the microphone?
Hi, I'm councillor Elaine Atkinson from Paul. I've seen the dates, today I put all of the executive dates in my diary, but you don't have any venues against the dates on here. And I think that's really important for us to understand what we're going to go to. That was all.
I would first of all like to say in response to that, first of all, great thanks to Christchurch Council for allowing us to use this excellent facility. I think the fact that we do have both video and audio recording does help us with public engagement. And Lindsay, are there any plans as to how we might be able to move forward with the greatest efficiency and public engagement?
Thank you Chair, yeah. The actual dates were for your first item of consideration and then obviously beyond that is venue. Some of the other shadow authority meetings have taken the approach of rotating venues or you may prefer one particular venue, that's really for you to determine and then we'll obviously see if we can secure those venues for the dates.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you councillor Judy Buck from Paul. It's been interesting watching what's been going on today, just a bit of feedback from a member of the public or whatever you'd like to call us here today. But I think that the importance of the shadow councils and shadow groups meeting far outweighs a business improvement somewhere in Bournemouth or Paul and I really think that the local sovereign councils should be changing their meetings and not changing these because it's, these are very important and I feel that these should come first with the deepest of respect. Thank you.
Just reading the body language around the table, I think there are many of us who might agree with you. Thank you. Are members happy to agree those dates and take on board the comments made from the gallery, shall we say? Agreed? Agreed, thank you. Oh, any views on venue, I mean, around the table we start from the, we start.
Can we sort out the venues as soon as possible please? A few of us have already booked holidays a long time in advance, totally unable to change them, apologies. And if we are asking for subs, we need to be able to tell people where they're going to be. So as soon as we can put them in. I would actually prefer if we could rotate. I know we all travel from different distances, but we've got a long way to go over to Paul. I mean, we could have had a bus from Greensleeves Avenue.
Would you like, would you like to make that a move by any chance?
Don't do it next time because that's the one we can't come to, but we'll have the September one input.
That's a move for Paul in September. Around the table please.
I was just going to say very similar, that it should be a rotation.
Yes, despite the fact that as I say, I've really enjoyed myself here at Christchurch, but I think as you rightly point out, we ought to distribute it equally around the conurbation. Members agreed? Sorry councillor Bath.
Bearing in mind, we want members of the public to be involved as much as possible. Is there any ability for the other venues to have similar facilities to this where it is recorded so that members of the public and other members can engage in it without actually being in the room?
In Paul, the facilities don't exist. In Bournemouth, there's audio recording, but it might be a suggestion that as you plan your work programme, if you have an item of particular high public interest, you may want to review the venue according to that and determine whether you need to use these facilities here. That might be a suggestion.
I think that would be quite wise particularly where there are issues that the public are more likely to be wanting to be able to witness what's said and what our scrutiny process is, that would be quite useful. Not that I'm biased because it's just around the corner from where I live, but I do think it's useful for members of the public to be able to engage as much as possible.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much indeed for going over time. I've really enjoyed this evening, I've got to say, and looking forward to our next meeting. Thank you all again and please spread the message to your colleagues and your residents that something good is happening. Thank you very much and good night.